For Monday, February 25th, 2019. We have a couple of presentations and staff reports this evening. Our first presentation, delayed by a few days, is on the National Historic Trails Strategy Concept Plan. This was an item that we had on our agenda at the council meeting on Tuesday. We did go ahead and pass the resolution regarding this, but because of the weather, we were not able to have the presentation, so we're going to have it this evening. Mr. Seaman, would you like to introduce our presenter, please?
Be my pleasure, and thank you for that introduction, Mayor. So, it's such an exciting project, I think we'll just jump right into it and ask Marlene Nagel from the Mid-America Regional Council to come up and share this exciting project with us. Thank you, Marlene.
Well, good evening. Thank you for your indulgence of allowing me to postpone the presentation to tonight. We're excited about this plan, and we know how important it is to the city of Independence. We started this plan several years ago, working with local officials across the area, with regional and local trails organizations, and with the National Park Service. And the purpose of the plan is really to look at the three of the national trails that go through the greater Kansas City area, and try and identify as close as possible an alignment for visitors, whether they're residents of our community or visitors from out of town, to be able to really experience the history of our communities, to visit historic sites, to traverse the trail landscapes, and really get a sense of what the history, the importance and the value of the history of our community. There are nineteen national historic trails that have been designated by Congress, and four of them actually go through the greater Kansas City area. This plan addresses three of those national historic trails, the Santa Fe, California, and Oregon. And the retracement trails are viewed as modern, but they're also viewed as non-motorized routes. There are some sign, there is signage around the community that designates driving routes that people can take to try and get, again, as close to the alignment of the national trails as possible. But this is meant to be more of an on-foot, or perhaps on-bicycle route that people might take. The planning also includes some guidance around signage, trail features, and ways to interpret the elements of the historic routes, and to tell the nationally significant stories. So, in our work, we also worked with a landscape architecture firm, Vireo, and we went, we worked with cities along the entire corridor from Sugar Creek to Gardner, Kansas. And it was, the work was built on some early work that the National Park Service did in South Kansas City, in the Three Trails West area. So, they were sort of a pilot project to look at how this kind of a process might work. What we heard from the National Park Service was that there are national historic trails, retracement plans like this around the United States, but most of them deal with very small geographic areas, portions of one community, that this was really a unique project for the National Park Service. And so, it goes through communities from Sugar Creek, Kansas City, Raytown, in addition, Independence, and then on the Kansas side, Leewood, Prairie Village, Overland Park, Lenexa, Olahtha, and Enz and Gardner, before it leaves the Kansas City metro area. And we, we had the interest and the support of a number of the trails organizations, and what the National Park Service said was really unique, as well, in addition to the number of communities and the geographic distance, was the density of historic sites along the three corridors. And they made a distinction between what they see as purely recreational trails and these national historic trails, that really they're, they should be recognizable and distinct. And so, signage and design features and interpretation really do make a difference. And so, in the plan that we produced with the National Park Service, it gives a lot of guidance to that end. In the executive summary that's in front of you, and I do have a few extra copies if someone from the audience would like one, and it shows the routes of the, the three trails and the approximate routes through the, the greater Kansas City area. And in some cases, including in Independence and Raytown, for example, the trails that we're suggesting are very close to the actual historic routes. But in other cases, they're up to a mile or so away from the actual historic route, and that has to do with respecting private property, or maybe some topographic challenges, or limitations due to streams, or highways, or other barriers that would prevent public access. And so, it, it gives you, and the plan provides a lot of detail about the route. And so, from Sugar Creek, we actually identified several routes that would take visitors from the Sugar Creek area to, say, the, around the Independence Square. And then, there's several options for going along or through the Independence Square area, and then taking route south to Raytown. And the plan is really a concept plan, and so, it's not, there's not a specific alignment that needs to be respected. We were really asking each community to look in detail, and at the time the plan was completed, some communities had been able to complete their planning process, but others are still working through it. And I know Independence is doing some planning work around the square. And so, at some point in the future, the city might identify the specific alignment, and then work on signage and trail features and interpretation to go along with that particular alignment. The Mid-America Regional Council Board adopted the plan in, in January, and called for its use as we develop our new long-range transportation plan over the next year and a half. And then, as our organization asks local communities and other project sponsors to submit projects for funding, this plan will be one plan element used in, in rating the projects for, or ranking the projects for funding. And then, we are asking the communities all along the alignment to consider adopting, first, a resolution of support, which you have done, so thank you for that. But as you complete your work in identifying the alignment, to perhaps put it into your local plans, whether it's a local trails plan, a parks plan, or a comprehensive plan. And with that, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Marlene. Are there comments or questions from the council? Yes, councilman?
Thank you for the presentation. Looks like a lot of good planning has occurred already, and I guess Mark is coordinating some of that? Is that right?
So, we worked with the National, the National Park Service, and their staff was instrumental in developing the plan, their expertise and knowledge of, of the National Trails program, and then the information they were able to bring. And then, we used a landscape architecture firm that also worked very closely with city staff.
So, will the National Park Service have anything to do with some of these trail heads, or the mark, markings, the signage, the trail for bikes, or pedestrians, things like that? Will they?
They have guidance that we have included in the plan, and, and I think they would hope that as the city might develop the trails, and develop the signage or the design features, that they would utilize that guidance. We do have a small grant from the National Park Service, and we've offered, we have fifteen thousand dollars for the city of Independence to perhaps use that for a segment of the new, of the system, perhaps paying for signage, or some, either for directional signs or interpretive signs.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Yes, councilman?
All right. Good to see you again.
Good to see you, sir.
We've talked about this, and I've heard the recommendations. My first question is, what's the fourth trail?
The Lewis and Clark.
Ah. Does that go? When these things come together, we have a big plan to put this stuff, and we want to work closely with you. My understanding of the difference between national and what we would call our city, or more historic, is that you can have businesses along our trails, the one that we're recommending and stuff like that, so that the people could enhance your availability to drinks and other things along the trail. Whereas, on the national, they don't allow that unless you have certain licensing aspects.
I think you're thinking about scenic byways. And so, in that particular program, there are some restrictions on development close to the corridors in order to sort of preserve them as scenic. But in the case of a national historic trail, I mean, they really want to get us close to sites to be able to enhance the visitor experience, and so...
Right. We had a former mayor in Sugar Creek who was very big on this, and he brought us a lot of things that feed into this. I want the trails to go up through the fourth, so I don't want them to just stop somewhere and then go, their route to Raytown to go somewhere through the fourth. But we're working on that, but we look forward to continuing the cooperation that has already been done.
Great. Well, we appreciate that.
Council? Okay. Anything else? Thanks, Marlene. I've, you know, been very involved with this, and, you know, seen it at many Mark meetings. It's great to see, you know, this presentation this evening. I mean, clearly, by looking at the map, Independence owns the abundance of existing historic trail sites along this entire route from Sugar Creek to Gardner Junction, and then beyond. So, we certainly have put a lot of emphasis into trail planning, and especially in Independence for All, and connecting these historic sites together in our city, and then, you know, outside of our state limits. So, we've been very successful in securing some funding, but this will certainly help us to continue to secure funding for the portions of the trail that are in Independence, and hopefully, as councilman has said, attract additional tourism and commerce along these trail systems. So, we're very, very excited about it, and glad to be a part of this program. Anything else? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have a presentation on the Independence Clean Indoor, Indoor Act, I'm sorry, Clean Indoor Air Act Proposed Update.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Independence really has been, over the years, a leader when it comes to regulations around the utilization of tobacco products, first with our Clean Indoor Act that was adopted several years ago, and most recently, our leadership on Tobacco Twenty-One. But I guess we can be proud that we haven't rested on our laurels. Our Board of Health has come forward with additional recommendations to modify the Clean Indoor Air Act proposal. And this me, evening, this meeting at the direction of the council, we're bringing those forward for you for your contemplation and consideration to see if we want to take those forward. So, we're joined tonight by two members of the Board of Health, Doctors Ralph Ruckman and Don Potts, and I would yield to them for a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Dr. Ralph K. Ruckman, and I'm the Chair of the Advisory Board of Health for the City of Independence. Tonight, I'm accompanied by Dr. Donald Potts, a fellow board member, as well as Professor Emeritus with the UMKC School of Medicine. He's also a Mayo Clinic Certified Tobacco Treatment Specialist. Dr. Potts has been instrumental in the drafting of the Clean Indoor Air ordinances for Kansas City, Olahtha, Lee's Summit, and Independence. Dr. Potts will be presenting the board's recommendations for the proposed updates to the Independence Clean Indoor Air Act. Dr. Potts?
Thank you, Al. Madam Mayor, city council members, thank you for allowing us to come here tonight. Looking back, we have come a long way, if you will, in the last thirteen years. There was a lot of antagonism at the beginning of this thing. People had all kinds of ideas of what they should and shouldn't do. But over the years, it has become more normal to be a smoke-free community, and more and more are doing that. We have now thirty-some-odd states that have smoke-free laws that are statewide. Missouri not being one of them, unfortunately. Kansas is. But the Board of Health, over a period of several years, had talked about changes and updating of the ordinances that we have. And then, Andrew Worland founded a committee to come up with some suggestions, which they did, and then, it kind of fell by the wayside when the, when the Health Department quit operating. But the Independence Advisory Board of Health has maintained a presence and a concern about the health of the citizens of Independence. And these are some of the suggestions that, that the entire group came up with, if I could figure this thing out. Let's see. Okay. This is a summary of the present code.
There you go.
Where is the summary of the present code? I thought this was going to be in here. There you go. Oh, I did. Okay. Thank you. Sorry. As most of you know, it's been in effect about thirteen years. It was, went into effect on, in March of nineteen, of twenty oh six. And has been rather effective. There have been very few complaints, and almost none in the last few years, that I understand. And as you know, private residences are exempted unless they have a childcare unit or a daycare unit. Private vehicles are exempted, and currently, twenty percent of our hotel and motel rooms are exempt. And that particular portion of the ordinance has been changing in other coun, other cities across the country. But it's something which, of course, the people who rent those, the hotel people, like to have that. In most cases, when that's happened, they have to maintain the same percentage. The same rooms have to be the same. They can't take twenty percent from one area, ten from another. And then, the private rooms and semi-private rooms in nursing homes are now exempt, providing that the people who live there, one or two more people who actually live there, smoke and agree to allow smoking there. The problem we have with that is that the employees are not protected. And people in adjoining rooms, or any room that's attached to the condition, air, air unit, those people are also at risk for secondhand tobacco smoke. Our Surgeon General has come up with some pretty good definite statistics about secondhand smoke. Used to be, it was just kind of a nuisance, and now we realize how dangerous secondhand smoke can be. Actually, in some instances, more dangerous than primary smoke, the person who's smoking themselves. Any questions about the current code? Anybody? Okay. Let's see what we can do here. Okay. We have some proposed updates. Most of you are aware, if you, unless you don't read a paper, that vaping, which is rather an inaccurate term, has come into the forefront by, it started by a Chinese person about fifteen years ago, and it became rather common in the United States. And they called, they start out calling them electronic cigarettes, trying to get the idea, well, they're, you know, keeping up. They actually are electric. They're not electronic. It's a, it's a small heater that heats up the tobacco in there, or the nicotine solutions. And in, and the idea of the nicotine solutions is that you can put not only nicotine in those things, but you can put a lot of other things. And they're selling a lot of other things. One of the most common things is what they call hash oil, which actually is cannabis. It's marijuana. And you can easily put it in the liquid form into one of the electronic cigarettes, so... So, we feel very strongly that we like to have what's now called alternative nicotine delivery devices, I guess is what they're called. All right. And so, what has happened, that the number of young people, by young people, I mean thirteen to sixteen, has increased by several hundred percent in the last three or four years because of something called a jewel. A jewel looks like a USB drive that you stick in your computer, and they actually use that for charging up the heating element in there. And it looks just like that. A little bit longer, but it looks just like a USB drive. And those are the things that the kids sitting in the back of the room are, are using, because some of the, some types of those don't have any, any vapor or, or any sort of smoke that come, that comes out of it. And so, they sometimes have a smell, and depending on what it is, it can be identified. But that's what, that's what kids are doing. And one of the reasons that we passed the Tobacco Twenty-One law to include vaping, because what had happened, and is happening, is the kids who are eighteen and can buy those things, they buy them for their twelve, thirteen, fourteen-year-old friends so that they can actually go ahead and smoke, which is one reason we didn't include any sort of a penalty for catching young people who are smoking, but just for the purchase of them. We'd like to restrict the smoking near entrances better than it is now. Most places now that have comprehensive smoke-free ordinances use about fifteen foot, somewhere between fifteen foot and twenty foot. Some have twenty-five foot from entrances, open doorways, open windows, air ventilation systems, because those certainly are very, very vulnerable to bringing in the, the smoke and tobacco smoke from, from outside. And one of the, one of the problems we have had elsewhere, and also probably might have here, is that some of the sidewalks in front of these places, especially downtown, don't have fifteen foot from the front door to the curb. And so, what the, the retail people say, well, they'd have to walk out into the street. Then, if they got hit by a car, we'd hold the city responsible. So, we, we would have to look at that and, and either think about an exemption, depending on the, on the amount of space there is there. But most of us, I've talked to a lot of people, have had the unfortunate honor of walking through a bunch of people smoking to get into a restaurant, or a bar, or something like that. And that's not only distasteful, but it's also dangerous. These are toxic fumes that have cancer-bearing chemicals in them. We'd like to restrict the smoking at bus stops, or transportation stops, open shelters, or whatever they are, similar to the one we have out here across, across the way, for a couple of reasons. One is when, what, three years ago, maybe, I think, I think it was three, four years ago, the city put in heating elements in the, in that unit over there, the, the, what, it's the, what's the name?
Transportation Center.
The Transportation, is that what we call it? Okay. Which was a neat idea for people out in the cold, but that rather immediately disenfranchised the seventy-some-odd percent of our population that doesn't smoke from getting up close to the heat if they didn't like the tobacco smoke. Most places now, if they have a comprehensive law, include outdoor transportation stops for that. This would also allow us to be listed by the Americans for Nonsmokers' Rights as a, having a comprehensive cleaner law. That's the one thing that keeps us from doing it, actually. The next one is change the definition of enclosed space. I have to kind of laugh about this to some extent. There's a restaurant downtown Kansas City. I have to say, it's owned by an attorney. And after the Kansas City law was passed, they decided, by looking at it, and really, really looking into it, that it said that a wall went from floor to ceiling, which sounds reasonable, but they decided if they cut off three inches from the bottom of a wall, that it no longer is considered a wall. And when that was brought up, they actually won that because the law said had to go from floor to ceiling. So, we'd like to kind of preempt anybody maybe trying to do that by, by eliminating, or at least modifying, that definition somewhat. The next thing is restricting multi-unit housing units. Again, we're stuck with the idea that anybody smoking that in any sort of a building where there is air circulation, which includes all buildings, the air gets into other areas where it's not intended to be, or, and can't help that. The only way that can be done is if every, every single unit, or every room, or every section, whatever you want to call it, would have a completely separate air handling system, which has been deemed pretty unavailable in terms of cost. And they have been able to show very clearly many times that air in, in, in a apartment building cannot be kept out of other pla, other apartments in that building. You go to a restaurant, and sometimes, not around here, thank goodness, but elsewhere, and they'll have a big air handling unit saying, well, you can sit over here. This is the non-smoking section. You've heard this before, but I have to get a kick out of it. Having a non-smoking section in a restaurant is like having a non-peeing section in a swimming pool. It gets there anyway, no matter what you do. And the Society of Air Conditioning and Ventilation Engineers have determined that in order not to have secondhand smoke settling in, in, in any areas, it would have to have hurricane-strength air, which is with the hundred twenty, hundred twenty-five mile-an-hour air to keep things from depositing where they shouldn't. In multi-unit housing units in several areas, they have been very, very successful. Some of them have had, in Kansas City, for instance, they had a one-year they had a one-year vacation, if you would. They, they would, you could stay there for a year if you smoked, but then you either had to quit smoking or you had to move out. And some of the people in Kansas City felt that that was, it was discriminatory for people because, quote, "It's their home," which it is. But that doesn't allow people to poison other people just because they happen to live in that particular home. So, most of the people that have done this have done it, well, the government has, has required government housing. Christina, you've, you reminded me of that. The government has stated that in government-sponsored housing, they cannot smoke. Is that right now? Okay, so. But there are many, many other housing units, around multi, multi-unit housing units, where people are exposed to other people's smoke. We talked about briefly about long-term care units and lodging. And there is, the city has done a really good job of reinforcing and enforcing the smoking and non-smoking. When, when this was first, I don't remember whether it's actually in the ordinance, but when it was first proposed, they were giving a exemption to fire departments where the firefighters spend the night, and it was, it's their home for the night, if you will. And, and that seemed pretty reasonable because it'd be difficult getting out in the middle of the night sometime. My understanding, again, correct me if I'm wrong, Christina, that the vol, the firefighters have voluntarily agreed to go non-smoking in those places? And I'm really, really tickled about that. I, I'm, I'm really excited that they would do that. Move on a little bit here, I won't take too much long. We talked about vapor and the altern, alternative nicotine devices. The surgeon, let me read that for sure. The surgeon general has shown that high school students using e-cigarettes has risen from one point five percent in 2011 to sixteen percent four years later, in 2015. All of the e-cigarette companies have been purchased by the tobacco companies. And they, they know that the use of tobacco is going down, and it has gone down. And nationwide now are, people who smoke tobacco are down around fifteen percent. When it used to be thirty and thirty-five, at least when some of us were young. And so, that's been healthy in a lot of ways. The problem is that more and more kids are using e-cigarettes at a young age, twelve, thirteen. And, ah, if you can get the number, I'm sorry. But a, a large number of them, I saw, I don't want to give you a wrong number. Large number of them convert to tobacco when they, you know, when they get a little older, eighteen, nineteen, or twenty, which is a lot worse. We know a lot of bad things about e-cigarettes. A lot of toxic things that they didn't think were there, but they are. A lot of them come from the flavors. And of course, the tobacco companies say, oh, we're not really targeting the kids, but why do they have bubblegum flavors and cherry malts and things like that for flavors? And they, they are doing some pretty good advertising, advertising. One point two million dollars a day advertising by the tobacco companies. You, you can't counteract a whole lot very easily. The entrances, we talked about that. So that hopefully people wouldn't have to go through tobacco smoke to get to, into a building or sit by a window where people are smoking underneath them. There's at least one restaurant, one restaurant here that has an opening between the outside deck and the inside restaurant, and it's wide open. They don't allow smoking, of course, inside, but four foot away on the deck, they allow smoking because our law doesn't cover that. So, there needs to be some, something that would cover where food is served. Especially with kids, because kids are so more, so much more vulnerable to the bad effects of tobacco and other things. Bus stops, we talked about that. The enclosed space, I didn't want to really give all attorneys a bad name, but those guys were pretty sneaky in cutting the bottom of the wall off. Multi-unit housing, lodging, long-term care. City property is doing very well. My understanding is that the city has a policy now about smoking in parks rather than a law. Am I right about that? Christina, okay. That would make it a lot easier, I think, for enforcement if it was actually a law. Right now, we have signs up, which has worked pretty well, I understand, not, not only here but elsewhere, that because of the kids being there, you know, tell them not to smoke. But I think it would be probably a good step up to actually make that an ordinance. That's something you guys, of course, will have to decide. Enforcement, as I mentioned very briefly earlier, has not been a problem. Typically, self-policing has taken care of the problem with proper education, which we did thirteen years ago. We did a pretty good education problem there. But that would help enforcement of this. Okay. Questions?
Thank you, Dr. Potts, Dr. Ruckman, for being here. I, along with the rest of the council, had received some information from the Advisory Board of Health some weeks ago outlining some of these recommendations. So, I hope that many of us had had an opportunity maybe to review some of these. You know, first of all, I want to congratulate our community and no small part to you two gentlemen and our Advisory Board of Health. We truly have been a leader in public health in this region with the Clean Indoor Act in 2006. And then we were, in fact, the first city in the region to adopt Tobacco Twenty-One. And I think it has made a very positive impact. We also, at the city, have restricted the use, restricting smoking certainly in and around our public facilities, as you mentioned. So, I think those are all making positive changes. There's many things in here that I think are, you know, very appropriate, certainly including vaping products, which did not exist in 2006. Seems like a very logical thing to be able to include, to expand that definition and look at those ordinances that reference smoking or tobacco and to make those amendments. The things that I have concerns about, I suppose, is, is enforcement. I mean, we can restrict smoking on city property in our parks. We can, you know, pass an ordinance. It's very, that, it's very difficult to enforce that. I mean, there is a sense of if it's posted, then maybe people will recognize that that's something that they're not allowed to do and self-police themselves, but they may not. And the, you know, actual, the reality of us going out and writing a ticket for something like that is probably pretty unrealistic. I mean, we have littering ordinances. We see that obviously people still litter. We have noise ordinances. Obviously, people still play loud music, you know, those, those types of things. So, I am a little concerned about the enforcement on that. And again, at the bus stops, we have Indy bus stops that we control. We have KC ATA bus stops that aren't under our jurisdictions. I mean, generally, they're in the public-
We're working on them, by the way.
Public realm, yes. And, you know, how you enforce that, you can certainly, you know, put a sign, no smoking at the bus stop. But, you know, the reality of enforcing that is probably pretty unlikely. Restricting smoking near entrances. I, you know, am going to really be reluctant to impose additional restrictions on things that were not included in the original ballot issue that was put before the voters. Voters voted on certain things with certain expectations. And I, we have an obligation, I, I feel that my obligation would be, if we were going to change what the voters approved, then we need to take some of those, we need to really take a hard look at that and potentially take that back to the voters to see if we could expand the authority that was put in at that time. I'm going to have a very difficult time, you know, regulating private, what private businesses do in the public realm. I mean, how do you tell a restaurant that people can't smoke in front of their restaurant when they, you know, I just think that becomes very complicated. We have put in that at public buildings that you can't smoke within twenty, I think it's twenty feet of the entrance of City Hall, fire stations, any, you know, sermon center, Palmer Center, any of our city-owned buildings. But I, I, I think that it's problematic to start mandating that for private businesses. The restriction on lodging and long-term care, again, I think we would need to have some conversations with our hotel motel alliance and make those distinctions. I do believe, I mean, I want to say I believe that it would be beneficial not only to the guests, visitors, and the employees to restrict that, but I am going to be reluctant to put additional restrictions on private businesses when that was not included in what the voters were asked to approve in 2006. So, you know, that said, I think we're gonna clearly, you know, need some more time to really dissect each one of these recommendations, see which ones are in compliance with what the voters approved. Things are technicalities, I think, like including the vaping products. That seems logical. And then, you know, really have further discussion about what restrictions we're going to put on private industries moving forward regarding this. Comments or questions? Yes, Councilman?
Thank you.
So, thank you, Dr. Potts and Dr. Ruckman, for being here tonight. I, first of all, I just wanted to ask you a few questions about the vaping because I've heard some things myself. I was sitting in Silverstein Eye Center Arena last year, and we had a couple people vaping. As people were coming in, they were sitting there, and you could see the vapor going up. Eventually, the security people came over and told them they couldn't do that. But that vape that went into the, that vapor that went into the auditorium there at Silverstein, everybody got a taste of. And, and so, I've heard that that vapor, depending on flavors and other things that are in it, the oils never leave the lungs. Some of the oils from that vapor never leave the lungs. So, in that case, it could be even more health, of a health problem than even smoking. Because smoking, at least, there's a filter. But the vapor with that, those types of elements or the nicotine, there's no filter for the nicotine, you're actually getting more nicotine. Can you address some of those things about the vapor?
True. You get more nicotine out of an e-cigarette than your kind of regular cigarette. And it's more concentrated, so it does get in the lungs a lot easier. A very recent article from Lancet, British Medical Journal, teenagers who use e-cigarettes have a much higher incidence of cardiovascular disease. Ones not using regular cigarettes, but just e-cigarettes. And that's brand new. It, it just came out very, in the last week or two. And I haven't pursued that further, but I thought that was an interesting, even if it's only half-right, you know, that's something to be thinking about. Yeah, the, the, most of the toxins come from the flavors, but not necessarily. Some of it actually comes, because they haven't been around long enough to do any really intense medical studies, which usually take ten to fifteen years to see how something's gonna happen later down the line. And so, we're still in the process of, of really trying to, to evaluate those things, so. But it, what worries me, of course, is, is the kids. Because they start, and I think at, at the, at the bottom of our, bottom of our literature from the city, it says, is it good for the kids?
Well, one, one of the studies I had read about smoking and vaping, but of course, kids' brains, because they are still developing even at, at age sixteen and eighteen, are much more susceptible to the nicotine and to the addiction to nicotine than, say, somebody in their twenties or thirties. And so, it's, it's a lot more likely that they will quickly become addicted to the nicotine in the e-cigarette, e-cigarettes.
And most people don't realize heroin is less addictive than nicotine. Nicotine is more addictive than heroin. Something to think about, because kids do, are much more susceptible, the brains are much more susceptible at that age. And that's why, that's why we raised it from eighteen to twenty-one, which I applaud you all for.
The restriction near entrances, the only concern I have is people having to walk through it. And I've had to do that in, in certain instances, at particular businesses or at nursing homes. It's not pretty. It's not nice to have to walk into a nursing home and walk through the smoke because they're sitting right outside the entrance. Some of the hospitals, I know Center Point does not allow it on their grounds or in the cars on the grounds. So, you can't sit in your car in their parking lot, smoke. You actually have to leave their parking lot and their property to smoke. So, they don't allow it any place on their campus. And a lot of the hospitals are going to that. They don't want any risk, at least of that health concern, especially if people have COPD and all the other breathing problems or if they're around some of the oxygen. And there's a lot more people using oxygen in some of the public facilities nowadays. So, I don't have a problem restricting it up to twenty feet from an entrance. I think it's in the long term for the best health of independents and for the children as well. My other concern is with, especially with long-term care and lodging, because they, most of them share some sort of air handling units. Maybe not per room, but they share it in the hallways, they share it in the common spaces where the drinks are, where the bar is, where the ice machines are, elevators, all that sort of thing.
Weight rooms.
Weight rooms. One of the, one of the concerns also, and I wish some of our firefighters who were here earlier were still here. A year or two ago, when we had discussions about the sprinkler system, and we had a couple architects give us all the updated information, almost all the fires that occur, occur usually in places where people sleep. Almost all of them. And they don't occur in places, a business that are only occupied during the day, waking hours, it's usually where people sleep. And so, these are the areas, the, the multi-unit housing areas and the lodging, the lodging and long-term care facilities are where people sleep. And that's where they're gonna fall asleep with either an e-cigarette that has a heater and could light a fire or an actual cigarette. And so, I don't have a problem. In fact, I think it would lower our risk of fires if we did that. It's gonna make, make things safer. And I, I would think that the firefighters would advocate for that as well. Because those are the areas, maybe, that aren't sprinkled. Some of the old ones come under the grandfather clause that they're not sprinkled. And so, by doing this, we actually lower the risk. lower the risk of fires in Independence.
And you, also, if you read the papers about, once every other week, someone has an e-cigarette, blows up in their face, and they have to have all kinds of plastic surgery and things like that. It's, it's happening more and more.
Well, they're lithium ion batteries. Some of them are lithium ion batteries, which have the potential to explode. That's right.
Okay, any other comments, questions, yes, Councilman?
Most of the studies done in the past have been by the cigarette companies. Your stats, well-meaning, and I think, are low. I think you have an even greater argument if, if the, we could go back and make the studies unbiasedly. I would've gave you across the board, okay, but I greatly am appreciative of your input here, Mayor. We have to look at the other side of this, too, and I think there's a little more reasoning to be done. When I read it, I thought, why not? I mean, I was always taught that example is the worst thing that you can do for somebody if it's a bad one. And these e-cigarettes are the worst example of this situation. It's catching on, and we're always catching up to a new invention. We haven't got the stats, but we know they're there. To be ahead of the curve is what you're proposing, and I have no problem with that. But the cautions by the mayor, we certainly are gonna look into this and push this forward as fast as, and as good as we can, but with those concerns. The tobacco companies have always been pretty sneaky, and they, we have a video of the eight largest tobacco company CEOs about ten years ago, in front of Congress, raising their hands and saying, tobacco is, is not addictive. Everyone might have to be, they're the ones, by the way, our, our, I think the other thing we're gonna have to change is that our law says that something has to be ignited. And tobacco companies are now coming out with cigarettes that are heated, but not ignited or burning. So, another thing about being ahead of the curve, you have to think about some of the, what possibilities are coming up.
Miss, Madam Mayor and Council, if I may, what we've done tonight is a preliminary presentation, and so, if you have further questions that are specific about any issue, I'd be more than happy to address those with more accurate and more precise information, so that, you know, some of the decisions that might be made will have, you know, the support and, you know, a little bit more information that I think will help to make the decisions that you need to make. And so, I just wanted to make sure you were aware that this is kind of a preliminary presentation.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming tonight.
Could I say one more thing?
Yes.
As far as enforcement goes, I, you know, we haven't, I think, been over the top with any of the enforcement up until now. And I think a lot of the enforcement, like in society, is peer pressure. And so, just by enacting the ordinance and maybe not having any other substantive enforcement, I think the fact that there is an ordinance and that the, and that the city is saying that this is the way it is, there's going to be peer pressure. There's going to be seventy percent of the population that doesn't smoke or doesn't use the vaping products, that are going to help enforce it and reinforce it to people that are. And it's, it's going to be on a case-by-case basis, and I don't think there has to be any other teeth necessarily in the law at this point, so.
I would agree with that. And one thing that I will applaud the city, the citizens, when we voted, we had a sixty percent, or sixty-one percent roughly, you know, favorability, a support vote, and that is amazing. And I'm just excited to think of how many people, how many lives have been changed, and people that are still alive today because of the restrictions that have been made and, you know, how their behaviors and habits have changed as a result as well. Thanks for your attention, and we appreciate any other questions we have later on.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to our staff report. Mr. St. Manter, Highway Safety E-Ticketing Application.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. A big focus for the council this year has been on public safety, and we've talked a lot about staffing, we've talked a lot about facilities, but certainly another component of that is equipment. Chief Halsey met with me last week and let me know about an exciting opportunity to pursue e-ticketing, which would help from both an efficiency standpoint, but also modernization of police practices. A component of that grant application, though, does involve a presentation to the council, so both for the council's benefit, but also as part of our application, we wanted to get on your radar this evening. Chief?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Brad Halsey, Chief of Police. Again, as stated, we are seeking a grant application that's due this Friday with the Missouri Department of Transportation for e-ticketing. What this would do is, the department is seeking funds to purchase the equipment and software necessary to establish e-ticketing within the traffic unit. Currently, officers handwrite all tickets. This can be time-consuming, especially when issuing multiple citations. With the advanced technology of e-ticketing, our officers will greatly increase their efficiency, along with enhancing officer's safety by utilizing real-time data while in the field and also spending less time on the roadside. Officers are able to swipe and scan state driver's license and electronically complete their citations. This drastically cuts down on the time spent issuing a citation or filling in repetitive information. Once the citations are completed, the information is directly uploaded to ENCODE, and this direct upload will eliminate the need for duplicate entry by the officer and court clerk, I'm sorry, and the court clerks, along with the clerks reading all the handwritten citations. So, if we obtain the grant that we are seeking, it will provide equipment for e-ticketing for the twenty vehicles assigned to the traffic unit. And about seventy-five percent of our tickets that are completed are officers assigned to the traffic unit. So, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to address those.
So, Chief, who are you, where is the grant coming from?
Department of Transportation.
Okay. And then, how much is, how much can we apply for? How much funding can we apply for?
We're applying for the twenty units with printers and the equipment would be right under eighty-eight thousand dollars.
Okay, very good. Any other comments or questions?
There is no match.
No match, that's just, oh.
We'll have small reoccurring cost after that, but again, the efficiency of this, we have a lot of duplicated efforts within our records unit and also across the street. So, this will be serving as a pilot project. Obviously, if we did it department-wide, that's additional funding, but we wanna start with the unit that writes the most tickets to make sure that we address any bugs with the system, so to speak.
Very good. Thank you.
Is this a state system, so it's linked to the rest of the state and pulls up?
No, not necessarily. There's a lot of different programs out there that does the same thing, but this will be adaptable within our, within our own system.
Thanks.
Great, yes, Councilman.
So, they've done this somewhere else?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause it opens up.
It's in most other places.
Yeah, this is not, unfortunately, we're just a little bit behind the curve on this, this specific technology.
Well, I can move on.
No. Yeah, go ahead. If you have it someplace else, then the, you know, when you make the stop, there's always, did you see this? Was it this many inches off the ground and everything? It doesn't open us up to further things. I mean, these are things that have been addressed in other places, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay. This is great.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay. Mr. St. Manter, Communications Plan and Strategy 2019.
Yeah, I'm going to ask our Public Information Officer, Meg Lewis, to give you an update this evening, just again, as part of our commitment in Independence for All to enhance customer communication. Meg has done a good job focusing on our areas for 2019 and wanted to make sure that the council and the community were aware of this strategy. So, I will yield to Meg.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So, we wanted to give you an update on what we were focusing on in 2019, but to do that, we're going to start in 2018. Looking back, we, as you saw in each of the quarterly updates, continue to exceed our growth on our social media platforms. We have a very dynamic engagement with our citizens on their posts are being shared more often. One of our posts, which we'll talk about here in a little bit, was shared more than a thousand times. So, people are looking there for information and regularly sharing that with their peers. We have more than doubled our video production and increased viewership of these videos by seventy percent. So, more people are turning into YouTube and watching those videos, both live and after the meetings. We have added a multimedia communications coordinator to our team, and we are really excited about that. And I'd like to take a moment. I am incredibly excited about the team that works for the city on communications. Zach, Faith, and Steve are all behind the scenes in many ways and don't get to talk to you guys on a regular basis, and they're doing tremendous things for the city on a regular basis. So, I'm really proud of what they're doing and what we've put together for the team. We have also updated the communication plan, which I'm happy to provide you a copy of. We will be now updating it with a new brand and the graphic standards that are a part of that into that new communications plan as well. Facebook, as you guys can see in that graph, continues to grow. That was January 2018 to this year. We have added a lot of people to our Facebook following. Nextdoor also is growing. We are up to about nineteen percent of the eligible households in Independence using Nextdoor, so we continue to grow on that platform. Instagram, well, seven hundred and twelve followers, doesn't seem like a lot. It's a big increase year over year, over the last two years. And Twitter, we continue to add sort of those key followers. That's more often where our media are following and looking at what we're doing. So, I put on this post, some of the top posts from 2018. The one on your left corner there is the MoDOT post that we announced that Seventy would be closing for work on the bridges that weekend. As you can see, it reached almost a hundred thousand people and was engaged with multiple times, which shows that people are looking to us for updates on different pieces. Our What's Thats, which is in the top right-hand corner, continue to be a huge hit with our citizens. They love learning about those new buildings and what's going on, what the building projects are happening there. And then, tweets, again, roadwork was one of our top posts there. So, now, switching to 2019, some of our general goals, we want to increase our proactive positive stories related to the city of Independence. Today, we got to announce that we have the second-best water in the United States and one of the top waters in the world, which seven out of the eight years, we have been able to claim that fame, but number two in the United States is pretty great. We are looking to create opportunities to regularly engage with the public in open forums. So, we tried over the fall some budget meetings, and we'll continue to look for opportunities where we have town halls or open engagement for the citizens to engage with us. We're working on a Facebook FAQ with our two chiefs, the police and fire, in March. So, look to that. And social media is a way for us to directly engage with our citizens, too. So, we want to continue to grow those likes and follows on social media. So, media outreach goals, we want to regularly communicate with the local media regarding events and programs and grow relationships with local media and key members of editorial teams. I put this example up with you, those regularly communicating with local media, it can be as simple as sharing our newsletter. So, I shared this newsletter in December with our local media partners, and within that week, we had multiple stories on our street crimes unit. So, we know that they're paying attention and can be looking to those opportunities there. Social media, we have expanded the use of video already tremendously in the months of January and February with the Weekly's, Weekly Manager's Minutes. You may have noticed the PD Thursday videos that we are doing and the Fire Friday videos. So, we are doing at least three videos on social media every week, but then we're also looking for opportunities to use video to tell stories throughout the week on different topics. This video of the time capture of the Plows going down Nolan Road was very well-received and gave us a different look at what our city crews are doing on a regular basis. And we're trying to continue to create and maintain a regular content calendar with up-to-date information. It changes year over year, and what we need to share with our citizens changes as we have different focuses. So, this is a look of just some of the videos that we have done so far this year. The first video on the left was a news brief. Instead of typing out what had happened at a fire, I asked Assistant Chief Dittimore to give me a video brief of it, and then posted that, just like he would've done a news interview to our citizens. They loved it. It was an easy way for them to understand what was going on, and it was more visually attractive to them than just the copy of those Independence Fire Briefs. The second is one of our Fire Friday videos, where Glendon Easley is explaining how our crews protect themselves when they go into a fire. The third there is the mayor's State of the City, and then the fourth is that time-lapse video. City seven, we are continuing to grow and expand our Inside Independence Library. If you have not seen these, we share them on social media as well, but it's a unique look at some of the programs or departments that are serving our citizens. And I have a screen up here in the next slide to show a few of those. We're working on creating a minimum of five news segments each month that are highlighting departments, events, programs, and venues. And we continue to find new ways to look at things, and Faith has done a tremendous job of looking at new ideas for Inside Independence, which we'll look at and again in the next One of the requests was the ability for the presenter to control the council chamber presentations from the dais. As you guys can see, as I am controlling that right here, we are continuing to update the, the council chambers to be more friendly to our presenters and working at other venues in the city to try to do that as well. And we are working to complete updates to City Hall to allow service-specific information on TVs. That may be a longer-term goal, but the idea is, when citizens are in our lobbies, they can find information that is specific to visitors that are here. So, if they need to pay their taxes, the TV screen would say, you should be at this courthouse. Or if they need to go to the municipal court, they would know that it's on the first level. And all of those sort of in-house messages that are unique to those that are visiting the city of Independence City Hall. These are three of the recent Inside Independences that the team has worked on, the Criminal Investigations Division, Park Recreation and Tourism. And the third one is a little bit harder to read, but I think is one of our most unique that has been done this year, and that is Hiram Young School. And it was an interview with some of the former students of the Hiram Young School as part of our hat tip to Black History Month and the unique role that that school played in our community's history. Additionally, we're having a quarterly focus. So, this first quarter, we are heavily focused on public safety, so that's why we have really upticked our videos and interaction with police and fire. Later this week, I will be going on a ride-along, tweet-along with our fire department and showing sort of what a day in the life of the fire department looks like. We're working on a police department version of that as well. And then we have the FAQ with the chiefs and some other announcements there. We've also focused each, at least one part of each city scene has had a hat tip to either a story about our police or fire department or actual content from our police and fire department. Second quarter, we'll be focusing on tourism and the branding implementation, that is, when our tourism sites open. And so, it's prime time for us to highlight the mini-venues that we have in the city. Two things that you guys have focused on in your goals over the last two years are blight and the new housing plan. So, we'll look at that in the third quarter, and then fourth quarter, economic and workforce development, and the unique things that have been going on in those will be what we'll talk about. So, that's sort of a quick overview of what we're focusing on this year. I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have about the communication strategy and excited about what we've been able to do.
Okay, thank you very much. Other comments or questions from the council? Other comments or questions from the council? Yes?
Thank you, Meg. Sounds great. I, I'm looking forward to a lot of these, uh, these projects and goals for the, for the year. I was wondering, since, um, the school district has just put in a TV studio within a block or so of City Hall over here, and I, I guess they're starting up their video journalism. Uh, I don't know that it started yet, but it would be, I think, desirable to, to network with them and partner with them and maybe ask them to do some, some little video stories for us as both experience for them and also a benefit for the city. And if we needed to do something in a studio, I mean, they've got one right there, we wouldn't have to duplicate a, a studio for the city if they would allow us to use it from time to time, so.
That is definitely on our radar, and we have communicated with the city, uh, the school district of our interest to have the students help us with some of those pieces. As they were transitioning this year, we haven't quite made it across that finish line yet, but we're hopeful. Uh, we would love to do a You Know Your From Independence with the students and have them show us that perspective.
Great.
Or the history of Independence from their perspective. So there's definitely things we're talking to them about.
Good.
Any other comments or questions? I would say, I think, one of the best things that we've done in terms of communication was our inaugural Citizens Academy. Um, there's nothing like, you know, real people interacting with our, um, our city departments and, and sharing that with their neighbors and their friends and their coworkers. So I know we're getting ready to launch season two of, uh, the Citizens Academy. Um, last I checked, I think we had one spot left, maybe? We're full, so.
Have a waiting list now, yeah.
Yeah, we have a waiting list now. So, um, that's a wonderful program that, um, I think has been tremendous as well. And I do wanna especially, again, you know, thank and acknowledge, um, Steve and Faith and Zach, uh, I mean, the tremendous work that they've been doing in designing and developing and filming and producing this video content, I mean, it's just made our communication, our engagement skyrocket. People, that's how people really want to get their content, and they've done a really tremendous job and really put together, you know, some, some great work that we can use over and over and over again. Um, the, um, video that they produced for my State of the City was fantastic, the one that they produced for our Independence for All Strategic Plan Update was really, really good. Um, so I'm, you know, I, I'd like to get those YouTube numbers up a little bit. Um, I think that's an area where we could put some focus to publicize that and, and share that a little bit, 'cause there's some, they've really done some great work with our, um, you know, limited resources, um, that we have here, so that's, um, something I'm very, very proud of. Um, okay, great, yeah, thank you. Anything else, Mr. St. Manger?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Right, good.[1791.48]